Testing one, two, testing.
Test one, two.
Oh, Lordy. They're ready to go.
Call the September nine Podscript School Board meeting in order. Please rise for the pledge of the flag. Local nine Podscript School Board members are present.
For the school, but there might be better ways to go through with it. And then, um, we as students, as well as many confused parents, just wonder if there can or will be any further adjustments to the ban in years to come. Do you guys know or have, have any plans? Yeah, just to put you guys out.
One, I appreciate you bringing up the topic as always. It's, we, we value your input and really do value the student perspective. I think in conversations with Dr. Zales and the leadership team at the high school, I think we are seeing some positives. We'll just continue to evaluate the progress on this. And again, even though it might not seem it, your safety and the safety of all of your fellow students and all of our staff in that building are the, are the most important part of our decision-making process. So we're going to take a wait and see attitude.
Okay, I respect that. I was just going to recommend, just like from the student perspective, lockers being reassigned to follow walking patterns could be a benefit that would make a lot of students like the rule a lot better also. But that would also just be ideally in a very safe world. So maybe only have lockers provided to students who have caused trouble or are seen as obstructive to the others, other students' educations. Just throwing it out there. I don't know, but yeah, thank you.
All right, I decided to do my school board report on the topic of school transferring. So that is from lower slash elementary school to middle school and middle school to high school because it can be a little complicated for some students and I believe it's very sufficient that they're supported throughout this transfer, well, transition. I interviewed three freshmen and one sixth grader. The students that were interviewed were asked the following questions. How did the start of your school year go? What advice would you give to the school board to make the process easier for students transferring next year? And what was good or bad about your experience? Most of them barely had any concerns. There were just a couple. For the high school, slightly longer period of time in between, in between classes in case of complications with lockers, just because some lockers are not the closest to some of your classes. So especially for freshmen who are new to the building can be a little challenging for them. Also for the high school, it was requested that students walk on a certain side of the hallway. Now, I understand this can get a little bit complicated because there's lockers on each side. They just thought it might bring a little bit more organization to the hallways. For the middle school, they wanted more time to get acclimated to the lockers since it is new for them and they don't have a ton of time to get used to that. Also for the middle school, they wanted personalized tours highlighting specific students' classrooms instead of just generalized points in the school, such as like here's the gym, the cafeteria, bathrooms, et cetera. And I was thinking maybe we could implement high school students giving tours to the middle schoolers in the middle school, kind of like we do here at the high school for part of eighth grade orientation. That way, if they have any questions about where's this room, where's my first class, we could show it to them. That way, there's less confusion on where they're going. The sixth grader I did interview, she was generously given a tour by the vice principal after privately reaching out to him for concerns about her classes. So it is possible. It's just, we don't want to put too much pressure on the administration to give out private tours. And as you may have heard, there was a huge positive overflow on both staff as well as district efforts on, and only slight critiques such as more adjusting time to schedules and changes as well as more familiarity with classes before the beginning of school. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jordan and Adam. Moves us to agenda item four, a report of our superintendent, Dr. Finnerty.
Good evening, everyone. So at our operations and finance committee, we had a presentation by a number of groups on proposals for our potential renovation of our athletics and facilities. Because our, because our, well, because we, we don't broadcast the committee meetings, I asked that in lieu of my report tonight, that the same team make a brief presentation on that so that the public can see what, what was discussed in committee and can engage in the process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our team.
Thanks, Dr. Finnerty, and thank you for having us again tonight. Just quick introductions, I'm Mike Lang with the CMTA ICS team. This is Bruce Christman, EI Architects, and we have Mark Singley here from KNW Engineers also in the crowd. If there's questions, Cody West from ICS, CMTA, and Carolyn from the KNW team as well. So with that, we'll just, real quick agenda, we're going to, the district did engage our team a few months ago to provide a feasibility analysis. So we'll just go through what that means, talk about the considerations, and that means what, what, what we've identified as a, as a group with the district, with the administration team, what the needs could be for the athletic stadium complex. Mark from a civil engineering side will walk you quickly through some of the zoning and site findings. Bruce will take you through some concepts and some things that we, we're at now. I'll come back with some scheduling and budgets and next steps and then open up for some questions. So just very quickly, again, the district hired us to do a feasibility study. What does that mean? So we looked at existing conditions, what does it look like now? What could it possibly look like? We, we looked at the site requirements, not just the facilities, but from a, from a land perspective. We clearly, you know, the, the district worked very hard on this. We worked, we probably met bi-weekly throughout the summer. So there's been a lot of collaboration here with the district and the, and the team and the athletic director. And again, number four is very important because, you know, you can come up with a lot of concepts and, 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 you know, good, good-looking things, but if it doesn't work on the site with stormwater and infrastructure and utilities and things of that nature. So we had to investigate those, obviously put together budgets and schedules. So what did we learn? The district is in, desires a turf football field. And when I say football field, it's just because it's on the football field now, it would definitely be a multi-purpose field for, you know, multiple sports, possibly, you know, other schools and even just the high school, the band, you know, could have a turf facility to, you know, practice on. The track would be resurfaced and, or not replaced, brand-new track, and the configuration would be flipped right now. The straightaways are kind of in front of the away bleachers. They shouldn't really be in front of the home bleachers. So that would be addressed, new scoreboard, lighting improvements, controls, parking, there'll be additional parking. Mark will get into that in more detail on the next slide. Circulation, ADA accessibility. So again, I will make sure that we put the word ADA in there, that accessibility means ADA improvement. So it'll be completely up the code, all ADA, you know, completely addressed. Stadium congestion, that means, you know, so inside the stadium as, as we understand it right now, there's a lot of issues with kind of bottlenecks and just moving back and forth. So we're going to try to address those. New bleachers on the home side, possibly with a press box and then some, some facilities. So you'll see some, hopefully some more facilities here for the district, for maintenance, for grounds, for delivery, you know, it's things that you don't see out there when you're in school. There's not a lot of storage. There's a lot of, you know, it's kind of bursting, all the schools are bursting at the seams. So providing an actual storage facility for a lot of the things that make a school district tick is, is very important. So we would try to address those as well. And then obviously, you know, addressing drainage issues at the site and also the track. So again, you'll see a lot of this in detail with Bruce and Mark. So I'll turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Mike. I wanted to talk a little bit about our process for analyzing the site as far as township requirements, zoning issues, potentials that, that may come up. So we took a look at the, you know, the base zoning district, the ordinance. It's residential district R2 that the, the main part of the campus resides in. The parking ordinance is pretty specific also. So we calculated how many spaces that you have on site at this moment, and it is actually less than what the township would require for your facilities. So I'll get into that in a bit. And then the specific use regulations, what can and can't happen on the site and things like that. So if we can go to the next slide. So, yeah, there you go. The educational use on the site within the R2 residential district is permitted only by special exception, which means you have to have specific zoning approval to have a school here. And that, that kind of follows through with any other new uses or new facilities that you have. That is an existing non-conformity in the eyes of the township. So it may or may not be an issue, but we wanted to bring that up. The other couple of things that are important here are the impervious coverage. Currently, your, your campus as it sits is, is forty percent covered with impervious surfaces. The township, actually in this, in the R2 zoning district, will only allow a twenty-five percent maximum impervious coverage. So you're well over as, as, as it is. Again, another existing non-conformity that we'll have to work through with township. Parking, calculating your, your largest assembly area, which is your stadium, we figured that the township would require approximately six hundred eighty-eight, six hundred ninety spaces. On the campus as a whole, right now, you have five hundred and ten. So you're currently, again, another existing non-conformity. That's sort of the theme of the, of the night here. So you'll see when Bruce talks about the designs and then the, the concepts, we would like to be adding parking. We may not reach that, that six hundred and eighty-eight space threshold just yet because we are pretty well landlocked and there's a lot of existing uses that will continue on the site in a lot of areas that may, you may park in. So I think with that, the other issue potentially would be lot consolidation. Right now, in the area that is five, where the baseball field is, is actually a separate lot. There's a property line that runs through that we may, again, talk to the township about having to consolidate the lots all into, you know, from two lots to, to, to one single lot. So that's one other item that we'll talk to the township about. A few weeks ago, the, the team did take our sketch plan to the township just to give them a quick blush on, on what we're thinking in anticipation of, of meeting with you, you all. And the plan was actually received very favorably. The township officials that we spoke with were actually happy with the plan that we showed them, and they expressed sort of a willingness to, to work with us on, on these issues. So we hope that, you know, meeting with them at that early stage will sort of smooth things through the process, and they really appreciated the fact that we came in as early as we did in, in the process. So the next slide, I'll turn it over to Bruce to talk about the concepts.
Thank you, Mark. We looked at a lot of different possibilities on the site. What you're seeing on the screen now is kind of the existing conditions. You can kind of go through the numbers on the right here, identifying the different dynamics that currently exist. You can see everything's kind of really tight. There's only no parking behind the home bleachers, even though there's a, kind of a gravel driveway there. And we're looking at how some of the existing buildings and structures would impact any new design and how they would kind of come into play with everything. So with the possibilities, we kind of honed in on one dynamic and really our exercise was partially, we got into the details, understanding what code implications we were going to run into, whether it's plumbing fixture count, parking spaces, impervious and the like. And we're trying to find that sweet spot. But at the end of the day, for new buildings or anything we're building new, it's really a square footage exercise. Really spent a lot of time working with the district's team, understanding what the square footage needs would be. And then we just kind of allocated spaces, as you'll see on the next slide here. We felt at least initially, meeting some of the needs and some of the, the problems that the district currently encounters, what, what we kind of showed here, the number six here is the new parking that's been allocated both on the right side of the screen and on the top behind the home bleachers. You can see it extending all the way back to the left side of the screen. We created two new entry points into the stadium that basically small structures, roughly about a thousand square foot each, that has a ticket booth, concession stand and security on both sides with kind of a fence kind of going all around the stadium. We thought the best use of kind of major additional space would be under the home bleachers. So we went through an exercise, we had a third party come out, evaluate the existing home bleachers, and there really wasn't a practical way, a cost-effective way to kind of reuse the existing structure under the bleachers. So what we have worked in here is replacing the entire home bleachers. It's more cost-effective to do that versus trying to jerry-rig and, and take it all down and rebuild it, so to speak. That allowed us to build a nice swath of square footage underneath the bleachers. Right now, we're, we're slightly poking out from underneath the bleachers, which you'll see in one of the renderings here coming up. But we do have flexibility to enlarge that, tuck it under the bleachers. We just did a one-to-one replacement for the bleachers because we're in the kind of yin and the yang. If we increase, increase the seating count, it impacts parking, it impacts plumbing fixtures. We even looked at a dynamic that if we got over like three thousand seats, that the plumbing fixture count would drop slightly, but it wouldn't offset the needs for the parking. So there's all these different dynamics going on that we kind of got into the weeds to make sure we understood. We also have to kind of demolish the existing restroom in the building up on the top of the screen, a screen between the number five and the number six. And also, we're assuming we're demolishing one of the smaller buildings down at the bottom next to that yellow box there. With doing that, we'd have to come up and meet the current code with the current plumbing fixture count. So we had to understand that, understanding what the square footage needs were for the district by looking at this option. The, the yellow box down there is reutilizing the existing maintenance facility, and we can assume that we can put most of the plumbing fixture count in there and also have some additional storage. And then up top there, we could also put plumbing fixtures up there. You know, again, we're just showing boxes here for what can be, so to speak. We have lots of options here of what we can put in these spaces, but we wanted to get a general sense of what made the most sense and, and not kind of go too far with overdoing on the square footage. Because again, the more square footage you have, that increases costs. The less square footage you have, it does decrease cost. If you can get to the next slide. So we put together some pretty pictures here just to kind of give you a flavor of, you know, what the plan looks like. Again, this is, and by no way the final design or anything, these are just really high-level concepts showing you what potentially can be here. You can see off to the right, lower right is the ticket booth, concession stand, and we kind of created a gathering space both for the home and waysides, understanding that that was a, a concern for the district. For this exercise, we just showed it covered. And then you can see off to the right where the home bleachers are, you can see the new structure kind of poking out behind the bleachers here. And then off to the left, kind of the same dynamic, ticket booth, concession, security, and then repurposing the existing structure that's right adjacent to the visitors' bleachers. Next slide. And again, these are just some other photographs of, you know, showing the home entry here with the ticket booth, concession stand. And the concession stand would be accessible from both sides. So you can access it from with inside and from the, the baseball fields too, understanding that, you know, that could potentially be a need down the road. Again, we didn't get too far in the weeds, but we just wanted to show you general concepts of what we're thinking about with some of the connection points. And then the next slide, the same thing with the visitor's side, access from both sides with the concessions there. So tennis court, soccer field can potentially get in there. And it could be either open on both sides or just open on one side based on the district's needs and what athletic programs are going on at that specific moment. Next slide. Another aerial shot kind of shows you some of the, again, square footage, and this is kind of the new track, as Mike mentioned earlier, kind of moving over to the home side, the extension that's needed for that. And then one last, we kind of did a quick image from inside the covered area, looking out at the track, just again, to give you a sense of what it could become and what we're kind of working on.
Thanks, Bruce. So with that being said, I wanted to put a schedule together to show if, if this design was considered and approved to be kicked off by the school district. This month, we would get moving right away with the next step, which is called schematic design. Schematic design is where you take those, you know, concepts and those, you know, and we really start to hone in and zero on exactly what, you know, the district wants. And again, we'll be back in to the school district at, at every single design phase, there's a check back endpoint with the school district, with the community. Hey, this is, this is where we are. Would you like to move to the next step? The answer is yes. We move into design development. Design development's really more the heavy lifting, where the drawings start to appear, the mechanical, the electrical, the plumbing, the, the structural. So that, that is where a lot of the heavy lifting goes. Again, another checkpoint, proceed to construction documents. Those would be the documents that ultimately would go out to bid, public bid for contractors to bid on the project. That, that would occur, you know, kind of in the middle of twenty-six if we were able to proceed that way. The, the next section down, and again, it starts early on, and that's why we're here now. It sounds crazy, but land development will be a huge time consumption. It's, it's a county-based conservation district in Montgomery County. It typically takes anywhere between nine and twelve months. So you cannot, you know, it's, we're disturbing more than an acre of land, so you cannot, you know, you cannot do anything until the, the conservation district approves. So it takes a long time. We need to get in, you know, sooner than later so that we could even be in place to have construction, you know, bidding start at the end of twenty-six, early twenty-seven, and have that construction for twenty-seven. So if this project is, is, you know, if we get to that point, we get to that point where we approve a project, then we're out to bid and we go to bid, you know, that site, it, it's, it's a lot of work, right? It's a lot of needs, it's a lot of work. It will, it will be a full-blown construction site. There's the, the most, most likely scenario is that, you know, spring of twenty-seven sports would have to be probably on, in away games or at, at another location. And then, you know, potentially even affecting graduation in, in, in twenty-seven on the field, right? So we would obviously be, you know, work as much as possible with the district and phasing and so on and so forth, but just want to put that out there right now, that, that there is, you know, unfortunately, when you redo your stadium... there is, you know, unfortunately, when you redo your stadium, no time is good. So try to get it to the right pieces and then get this back operational by the fall of 2027, for fall 2027 sports. So budget, right now, this budget is a, an estimate of like your most ambitious build. So, you know, you look at the very top section, you can see that we broke out construction costs of athletic, that's the field, that's the track, those are the lighting, the goalposts, the scoreboard, things of that nature. The second light item is 12,000 square foot. And again, that's a number right now. Part of the next process is zeroing in, dialing in on that. Do we need 12,000? Do we need 8,000? Do we need 14,000, right? So it's really dialing in on that 12,000. We think 12,000's a good number for now, for what you saw. That may not be exactly what happens in the future, but for every, every square foot, the dollars either go up or down. It's almost a direct correlation and an estimation exercise. And then obviously, there's site improvements. We talked about drainage, stormwater, earthwork, and so on. So construction costs, if like, we were ready to go right now, this is a $9 million project. The problem is, you know, none of us have a crystal ball in the room here, so this will be bid out in '26, end of '26, early '27. We have to account for, you know, another million and a half of contingencies and construction escalations. Hopefully, inflation's not 4.5% per year in the construction industry, which is what it's been over the last few years. Hopefully, it dials back, but for right now, we're just showing you what kind of like worst-case scenarios would look like. And then you have your professional services fees, you know, approximate permits and approvals and construction contingencies, and all in all, right now, we're approximately at an all-in cost of 13.6 for what you saw square footage-wise. And again, Dr. Finnerty made a good point, that the square footage really drives the cost. So that will be our task as a group, to dial that in, to hone it all in, and get you, get you the most functional space at the, you know, for your most fiscal, you know, responsible Next steps, right now, we're here. We're at the Operations Committee Board Meeting. We would ask that the board, you know, take some time and then consider approving the design kickoff, the design process, our design team to get started at the next board meeting in two weeks. And if we are approved, we jump right in. I mentioned there could be, you know, a select group of board members or admin that we could do a couple stadium tours locally, some projects that we've done before, some projects some other folks have done. You know, obviously, the school districts are very accommodating to other school districts to kind of get a flavor for what's been out there recently, and really kind of get down into the, as Bruce mentioned, dial in, zero in, get into schematic design, and really then show you what, you know, possibly by December, January, kind of like, hey, here we are, we dialed in, this is where the budget is now, this is what the design looks like now, should you want to proceed to the next step, which is design development. So that, that's it.
Well, thank you for that presentation. As Mr. Lang made clear, this was our initial presentation. At the next board meeting, we'll be asking the board to consider approving the design process. No decisions will have been made other than approving the design process. This will be a significant process, and there'll be a number of different checkpoints and a number of different informational sessions, including committee meetings and board meetings. So thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Agenda item five, 5.1 is the approval of the monthly minutes for our August 12th board meeting.
I'd like to make a motion. We combine 5.1 and 5.2 together.
Motion in a second to approve the monthly board minutes from the August 12th meeting and the August 26th meeting. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion's pass. Agenda item six, ratifying the payment of invoices for August 2025.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve in the payment of invoices for August 2025 in the amount of $1,829,213, as presented.
Motion in a second to approve the payment of invoices for August 2025. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Agenda item seven, action items personnel, 7.1 is the retirement of Chris Stein, Assistant Principal of Potts Grove High School, effective September 26th of 2025.
I'd like to make a motion. We approve personnel, 7.1.
Motion in a second to approve 7.1, the retirement of Chris Stein as Assistant Principal at the high school. Any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to congratulate him on his retirement.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. 7.2 is the appointment of Michael Zaccarda to the Assistant Principal of Potts Grove High School. Michael is currently the Dean of Students at the Potts Grove High School and is in the audience with us tonight, too.
I would like to make a motion that we approve 7.2.
Second.
And congratulations.
Motion in a second to approve 7.2, the appointment of Michael Zaccarda as the Assistant Principal of Potts Grove High School. Any discussion? Adam is clapping.
Aye.
Motion passes and congratulations, Michael.
Michael, I see some family members in there. Would you mind saying hello and introducing your family?
Absolutely. I'm sure many of you know that I am a resident of this school district, and these are my two kids. They're in the middle school right now. They're rocking it out, they're loving it. Academics, band, orchestra, sports, they do it all. So I'm just grateful that my journey continues with Potts Grove. Seriously. So thank you very much. It is my lovely wife. So this is Abby, this is Ethan, and my wife Melissa. So, yeah. Thank you. Thanks.
7.3 is the approval of leave of absences for three professional staff and one support staff.
I would like to make a motion to approve 7.3 through 7.9.
Motion in a second to approve 7.3 through 7.9. This is the leave of absence for three professional staff, one support staff. 7.4 is the appointment of two professional staff. 7.5 is a resignation, two support staff resignations and one support staff change in assignment. 7.6 is the appointment of seven support staff. 7.7 is one appointment and one rescinding because it was previously approved at the August 12th board meeting. 7.8 is the approval of 159 supplemental non-athletic appointments. And 7.9 is the appointment of supplemental staff for the Potts Grove SOAR program, nine supplemental staff, which is our clubs. Any discussion on any of those items? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion's pass. 7.10 is the granting of tenure for one eighth-grade math teacher, Ryan Okunisky.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 7.10 and congratulating for his tenure status.
Motion in a second to approve the tenure to Ryan Okunisky. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. This moves us to agenda item eight, actions items business. There are two items here. This is a change in the order, for the work order for the paving of Lower Potts Grove and Potts Grove Middle School. The items that needed to be addressed were not part of the original bid, so we need to rescind the original bid, which is 8.1, and then approve a new change order, which includes the new items, which is 8.2.
I would like to make a motion that we approve 8.1 and 8.2.
Motion in a second to approve 8.1 and 8.2, the rescission of the original change order and the approval of a new change order. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. 8.3 is a contract with ADD Education to provide instructional assistant contractors.
I would like to make a motion. We approve 8.3.
Motion in a second to approve 8.3, the contract with ADD Education for instructional assistant contractors. Any discussion? Those in favor? Oppose? The motion passes. 8.4 is the purchase of security cameras. This is for supplies only. All the installation will be done by our current staff.
I would like to make a motion. We approve 8.4 with an explanation for the community.
8.4 is for security cameras, both inside and external cameras. These items will be covered entirely by a grant, so this won't cost the district anything other than the work that it's going to take to install them. This is part of our ongoing security, safety and security improvements. As I have talked about at this meeting, every two years, we have site assessments done by Montgomery County safety teams who help us identify priority items to improve the safety and security of our buildings for our staff and students, and this is part of that plan.
Any other discussion? We have a move in a second to approve the purchase of district security cameras. Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Agenda item nine, action items education. 9.1 is approval of conference attendance to four staff members at the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Special Education Leadership Conference.
I would like to make a motion that we approve all action items, which would include 9.1 through 9.5.
Motion in a second to approve 9.1 through 9.5. This is the conference attendance at the MCIU Special Education Conference for four staff members. One staff member enrolling in a year-long development program from the Pennsylvania Fellowship Program for Special Education. When I say it's a year-long, doesn't mean they're going to be out of the position with what they're doing, but it's several education things over the course of the year. 9.3 is a virtual workshop, meeting the needs of gifted students and advanced learners for one staff member. 9.4 is two staff members attending the MCIU Student Assistant Training Program. 9.5 is for one staff member to attend the Pennsylvania School Business Officials, Facilities, and Transportation Conference. And I think that is everything, yes. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motions pass. The number 10, agenda item 10, is the report of the Western Montgomery Career and Technical Center Joint Operating Committee, or JOC, meeting, which took place yesterday, September 8th. I sent this report to all the board members previously. Just pass it out here, just want to cover some of the highlights from this report. Did not have the time to put it in the board docs because the meeting was, yesterday was a virtual meeting. Dr. Finnerty and Dr. Gonzalez toured the Western Center last week, and at the conclusion of their tour, Dr. Finnerty, who is the Superintendent of Record now at the Western Center, met with the Administrative Director David Levin Good to begin drafting goals for the coming year. So I think we'll hear more about what those goals are focused on. Bill Thompson has joined the Western Center Joint Operating Committee, so he was welcomed yesterday. And lastly, I want to mention that the Administrative Director recently got proposals from four architectural firms for increasing space at the Western Center to allow for more students. They are being reviewed. Dave is reviewing them at the October meeting of the Western Center, which is on Monday, October 6th at 7:00. If you'd like to hear those, if you don't want to go to the meeting but you'd like to see any of those proposals, you could ask Bill or Patty or me. We each have copies of those that Dave received. So they're moving forward with trying to increase space there, and it's been a long time coming. Any questions on the, before I ask for questions, Bill or Patty, anything to add to the meeting?
The only thing I was going to add is, I believe it was, we're almost up to 700 students. So that's pretty good for us.
Yeah, the principal, Craig, said that they, we are up plus 25 students from this time last year, where they are. I don't know the exact number there, but it's up 25. You were going to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to speak briefly to the, to the, two of the goal areas. So two of the goal areas address ways to admit more students into the program. One of the goals is, how do we do that without changing the physical footprint? So by reallocating the, some of the spaces and making modest adjustments. And then the, a second part of the goal would be to look at, what does a full renovation look like and what is the impact on enrollment? Again, just towards, every year, we have, we've been able to increase the number of eighth graders that are applying to participate in Western Montgomery CTC programs, and we turn a fair number of them down. So we're looking at ways to get more of our kids and more of the kids from the other two sending, partner districts into the program.
Anything else to add? Bill, Patty?
Moves us to agenda item 11, the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Board Update from Nik Ruiz-Brown.
Okay, so everyone received the updates I sent, and there wasn't very many highlights to share. There was one, the Potts Grove School District Agreement, where it was approved for Discovery Education Services, which is a digital platform that provides students and teachers with access to online textbooks, videos, and interactive lessons to support classroom learning. And that was for Lower Rocks and West. And the only other highlight was that there was a letter from Governor Shapiro talking about, discussing the budget impasse and how it affects kind of the growing crisis going on right now and how it delays early intervention services, missed meals for children, missed paychecks, hourly workers' wages, and that going forward, there will be, if the budget's not passed soon, they are looking at some major cuts. But what that led to in the final, towards the end of the meeting, was staff members talking about how important early intervention was for their families and their children. And I was able to say how early intervention was key for my children and their start to school and education, and just that it was, it's so important, and we need to make sure we, that things get done. Seriously, I mean, I don't really have anything else to say, but we have families that could really suffer for that, so that was really it.
Thank you, Nik. Agenda item 12, new business. Let's start with Stacy. Jim?
He's impressed the buttons.
Was that, I was, no, don't start with me, or no, there's no new business?
Just that I do very much appreciate the new layout. It's much more of a community feel than a tribunal, so, thank you.
Thank you. It was a suggestion from several of the board members, and Dr. Finnerty's telling me we're getting new tables, too, that we're telling me we're getting new tables, too, that will be about half the width of these tables, which will allow the configuration to work a little bit better, because these tables are wide, and we should be able to get the drapes back on the front of the tables also, too, which gives a bit of a privacy. What's that?
If they're much shorter, my feet might stick out the other side.
Well, that's not something most people want to see, but we'll deal with it. For those listening on the phone, they can't, maybe they can see your, your feet, if we had, he just, he just scanned over. Patty?
I would just like to remind everybody to slow down and be careful on the roads, it's so important, so important. I see it every day. Watch out for our kiddos and our staff getting here. And also reminder, if you go to the football games, go say hello to the PTO, they have all kinds of exciting food there. Go visit the Booster Shack, they have all new wear there, and don't forget the Music League, who's making fresh sandwiches, they're under the 10. So shout out to them and all their volunteers that give so much of their time. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Patty. Bill?
With respect to the budget impasse in Harrisburg, I'm not going to be really optimistic and believe we can, you know, change our legislators' minds, but just remind people that you can bombard them with emails and letters and phone calls, and just wake them up.
Thank you. Dr. Finnerty?
Just one piece of new business. We, while we've had a much improved transportation services this year, there are three bus routes that I've been hearing from parents about delays, particularly in the afternoon. We are working and working on rerouting those and making sure that we're providing the best possible services to our students and communities.
Thank you. Nothing from me. Ashley? Louis?
Just want to say it's nice to have our student board members with us again. I really appreciate the updates here and what's going on. Adam, welcome back. Jordan, welcome. So, thanks.
Thanks, Louis. Tanya?
Yeah, I feel like I got two segues. So welcome, Jordan, I wasn't, I haven't met you yet. And then also, I did just want to touch on the budget thing real quick, because we have not had an official legislative meeting, that actually happens next month. But I want, I did, I did go into things to try and provide update. There was a compromise budget put forward, I believe, yesterday from the governor, so we'll see what happens there, but the House technically, I guess, doesn't reconvene for voting until early next month. So things, so definitely bombard, definitely write, definitely call, whatever you need to do. That, you know, that's kind of where we're at. Hopefully, at the next legislative meeting, early next month, I will get more information on exactly what's going on in Harrisburg. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Tanya. Anique?
I just wanted to let everyone know that the Music League held their first meeting of the year last night at the high school. The Music League is a PTA organization that supports K through 12 music program. They meet at the high school at 6:30 PM on the first Friday of each month, and to please consider joining and supporting the Music League, you can go to music, or puttsgrovemusicleague.givebacks.com to sign up.
Thank you, Anique. And that moves us back to the student reps. Adam and Jordan, this is your last year here, Adam. How is the year going for both of you? What's going on?
Um, I'd say it's growing great. It's going really good for me. I have a Monco in the morning, so I have the opportunity to sleep in, and I'm still getting all my work.
That's nice. What you like about school is you have the opportunity to sleep in?
Yeah.
At home, not at, not at school?
Yeah, not at school.
Not at school.
I focus up.
And Jordan, how's your year going?
Um, it's going pretty good so far. I don't have the luxury of sleeping in, unlike others. But getting things off the ground with NHS and Avedum, so it's going pretty well.
Thank you. Moves us to agenda item 13, public comment. Can be on any item that anybody wants to bring forward. Anything in the room? Jeff, anything online? Before we move to adjourn, then, a reminder that on Tuesday, September 16, we have two committee meetings, Athletic, Co-Curricular, and Community Relations at 5:30, and Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology at 6:30. And the next school board meeting is Tuesday, September 23rd at 7 PM. So that moves us to move to adjourn? Meeting is adjourned.